All right, good evening, everybody. Joint Meeting of the Plan Development Subcommittee and Town Council Meeting, Thursday, March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six P. M. Veterans Room, it is now six oh two P. M. Roll call, Catherine is excused. Okay. Dee Dee?
Person?
Counselor Dow? Counselor Lazo? Counselor Adams?
Does Scott ever show up to this council meeting?
Huh?
Does Scott ever show up to this?
Once, once.
Two.
Oh.
Two times?
Yeah, I did. All right. Let's go ahead. We did the roll call. Gen item number two, consider accept the plan development meeting minutes of March third, two thousand and twenty-two.
Some more.
Second? All right. Any discussion on it? Okay? You have any questions on it? Okay. All those in favor? opposed, abstain. Okay? Is that item number three? Review discuss whether to recommend Town Council accept? I'm sorry, we should do this. Recommend Town Council accept the community development block grant, C D B G mini entitlement, fiscal year twenty-one, C D B G grant award for eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to resurface Crane Street to River Street, fund lighting and security for McCann Fields, code enforcement positions and administrative expenses. Be the first and the second? Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It's me. No, no, that's okay. Ms. Dean?
I feel like this is more of a technical motion. We're all fully aware of the grant and the application that came through last year. McCann will be lighting and security. That will be a wonderful complement to the previous year's project, which we're actually working on right now, which is for backstop netting at the front baseball field, new fencing at the backfield, dugout shade structures and a new scoreboard for the baseball field in addition to the park grant, which we just received. So I feel like it's a large culmination of investments that'll make an impact to this great neighborhood park.
Okay.
And with regards to the infrastructure, West Street, excuse me, Crane River Street, it's been determined needs to be done first before, for instance, something like Hamilton, which is a big priority for the town, gets done.
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, Dee Dee?
What is the code enforcement positions? It's positions, not just one person.
That, if I may, just give a quick history. Two thousand and seventeen, the Casella contract was paying for a position in the health inspections office, and that went away. The C D B G grant filled in sixty percent of the position, and we have since, in the next year, in two thousand and eighteen, then paid for a part-time building inspector and fully funded a full-time, a part-time building inspector, and then sixty percent paid for this health inspector. And so it just offsets the inspections department. For transparency, I will just state that I have advocated to the town that they should consider funding those code enforcement positions through the general fund. But it takes some time to, you know, because we're two years, almost two years ahead with our applications, and then we are behind in the fiscal year. We're never overlapping. It takes time if we're going to work away from that model for the town to think forward to. So for instance, as soon as you could do it, would be starting in the two thousand and twenty-four budget, and you'd have to kind of make those decisions in the next few months.
Okay. Thank you, Dee Dee. Counselors?
Uh, Joe? About the code enforcement, which I agree with, but have we filled that position? Because I see that it's been vacant, so, I mean, what's the, you know? I know it's hard to scramble, which is fine, I don't know, but so.
We have, we have not.
Not filled, so.
So this is more money down the road, obviously. It's, it, it would, off of Counselor Jovan's question, the, the money that we would pay for this individual to come on board could be utilized more on Crane and River and all that kind of stuff if we do not fill it, correct?
Correct. And if we were to make a, an amendment to the grant to move from one activity to the other like that, you would know, you would have to come to the Town Council for approval to move that money.
No, that's fine. I, I, I agree with the position, but it's, that position was funded out of the previous year's grant.
Yeah.
Right? So, so there's going to be additional money left from now, and until you fill this, this money would be there as well.
Correct.
So will you be for the F, hold on a minute, with FY twenty-one? Oh, my gosh. FY twenty, C D B G grant. So you'll have to still come back to us with a change, correct?
Yes, if we end up, we can't stretch that money out. So what we do is we just, you know, as we put extensions on the grant, we just keep paying from that same year, and we see if we can spend it out, and then it just kind of puts us a little bit farther forward. That's why I say it's all, you know, it's all, it's long-range planning if we're going to start to move away from the positions.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
No, I'm good.
Joe? You sure? Okay.
I have a good question.
Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Terrified here. So how long has this position not been filled?
Um, I'd have to look back at the last payment on my spreadsheet, but I want to say February of two thousand and twenty, and then we, or not two thousand and twenty, twenty, February of two thousand and twenty-one, and then we posted it, and we had a job posting in July of two thousand and twenty-one. We had some applicants, but we didn't have an appropriate candidate, and then I think we posted it recently, so, um, may, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it was March.
So, but either way, so the current, the current C D B G cycle, we haven't spent anything for it?
No.
At least not on this job, anyway.
So, and just without getting too down in the weeds, the health and building are in one activity, and so I can move between those lines. So what I've been doing is just spending all towards the health code enforcement officer, which was a little short in a prior year, and so it worked out that I was able to just pay the health code enforcement officer out of all of that budget. Yes, so, but yes, we will have extra, per se.
So, so the intention is to have both health code and building code, separate people? Okay. Why do you think that we're having such an issue of filling the second job?
Uh, that would be a question for Andy.
Okay. You're good, Counselor. Okay. Anybody else, Joe?
Because I like the idea, I just, I just don't like the idea of having, you know, we've had issues with having tons of money just sitting around. It don't, it doesn't go where we actually approved it to go.
Correct, yeah.
And I know that you come forward, you do come forward and make transfers, and you've done that on several occasions.
The, the only question I'd ask, Ms. Dean, is, I know, I think we ask for like every single year because it does, it get confusing on what, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Marketti, you had something? Okay. Could you, could you, on the, for the Town Council packet, could you provide the breakdown? I was looking for that of, I have it, I don't know if it's changed or anything like that, but just for the, the counselors that are new to this, to have a breakdown of, of the percentages?
Yes.
For the C D B G grant, that, I think that'll help out a little bit if, if they read the packet, so. Thank you, ma'am. Counselor Marketti?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was kind of going on the same questions that you were, because when I add up these totals, they seem like a lot more than eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. I was just, I was just wondering what, I'm sure I'm missing something here, I'm just wondering what it is. And when I edit up budget summaries, it adds up to eight hundred and twenty-five. So, just wondering what that was about. My other question is.
Is that, are you reading off the other funds? Or just C D B G only?
It just says budget summary, and I thought it said C D, two thousand and twenty-one. Mini entitlement, two thousand and twenty-one, it's up there. So, C D B G funds, and maybe it's, it's something else that, you know, you could just explain it to me. I'm sure it's right here, I'm not just saying that, why it's more than eight hundred and twenty-five thousand. And the other question I had is Crane Street to River Street, are you stopping at River Street on that? Because I know River Street needs some work, but I don't want to ask that.
Go ahead.
Two questions.
Um, I can provide all this follow-up information. The easy one is that you're probably seeing of the two columns, C D B G funds and other funds. The right-hand column, other funds, includes what we would have represented from water sewer potentially in the project for River Crane. And the way we had to stop was based on the low-income census tract where the line stopped, which was just around the, the bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we couldn't go any further. And so I, I'm happy to, again, provide how we devised the, the location. And then with regards to the, the budget, I'm happy to provide the, the breakdown of percentages. To your point, the infrastructure is usually, you know, three-quarters of the grants, or at least two-thirds of the grant, and then the other, the code enforcement and the admin are, are far less.
Good, Counselor, okay. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor? Pose, three zero. All right. Gen item number four is to recommend Town Council raise eighty thousand dollars in ARPA funds to create a temporary contracted position for one year to act as the redevelopment authority, executive director for the economic development and planning development under the direction of the C D B G Economic Development Coordinator to drive economic development in the town and take on special projects as directed. Very well.
A second.
Okay. Ms. Dean?
Um, I thought I'd come in with my tail between my legs. I wasn't sure if, based on the prior meeting where there was the discussion of the ARPA funds and how to use those funds, that I might be now getting ahead of a more appropriate process that the town wants to take with the ARPA funds. If you're willing to consider, I've been feeling like I'm maxed at capacity pursuing all these extra funds, and there's more, a lot more, that I could be doing, but the downtown needs attention right now. And so I thought that this might be the way to go if the town wanted to try to capitalize on everything going on in the immediate. How I described it when I was in the ad hoc meeting is Rob Mahigian came to town, hired by Franklin Realty to do this global assessment, macro-level assessment of the status of the town. He is a counselor of real estate, which is similar to the credentials I might be looking for if I was to consider someone for this position. They would be able to take the energy and the time to focus in on the specific properties, the kinds of fits that would be long sustaining for our downtown, and try to drive that economic development in a very specific way. What we hear from, for instance, Ms. Vary, Delta Vary from Putnam, what she talks about is how she was hired there to do specifically downtown revitalization, and it's really that, that, you know, the, the, making the relationships, filling, you know, helping try to fill some of those spaces, a big meal project, you know, she had all these things come together, and then working with her, her business partnership, they were really able to take off. I would love to be able to do that, but I am so focused on finding the money, which I think is equally as important, if not, I can't tell which one's more important, right? I'm trying to find the money for us to be able to do the projects with the funds that are, aren't going to be there in two years. So I just, I keep seeing this need that, no, we don't need a long-term economic development director, but we could use someone right now to be able to really drive some economic development. So there's my plea. I understand if the town wants to stop, take a global perspective of how they want to spend their funds and the priorities, and enough, there's my plea.
So I want to make note, real quick. I called Ms. Dean on this because she was not aware that we had made a decision last Thursday to set up an ad hoc committee on Monday. So she was being proactive, and I think we had, I, I, we had a discussion and said, in lack of guidance from the town when it comes to ARPA funding, move forward with your plan, and then let's just see where it lands. We, so you have options, and you, from postponing it because we just had a nice ARPA meeting, or just tableing it for right now, or move on from there, but I just want to make it clear, she was not aware of it, and she brought it forward because I, I think it was still a good idea, because if this fell apart today, then, you know, at least you brought it forward, and you're willing to spend that three-point-nine million dollars if nobody's going to spend it, so why not economic side as well? So I just wanted to add that in there. Uh, Counselor Marketti?
I think it would be appropriate to postpone it because there are a lot of people here today, and they all had some great ideas. I'm not saying this isn't a good idea, it's a good idea, but I think we should give everybody an equal chance here.
Okay. You good? Counselor Marketti?
Well, the other thing that I would say is that I would rather see Ms. Dean work on the downtown, hire somebody else to look for the money. To me, that would be a better use of this, in my, my opinion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Did you say, did you have something?
How do you see the behind the chair?
Go ahead, Counselor Dow.
Thank you, it was a chair for you.
Do you have anybody available for that position, or do you have to post it out?
We would have to post it out, for sure, and it would have to be sort of like a request for qualifications, I assume, where, you know, we have to post what the, the qualifications are, and then have people come forward for it, just like any other procurement.
I think it's a great idea. I'm, I'm going to support it tonight, too.
Okay.
Good idea.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I, I understand the ARPA position, however, we have a whole pocket of free cash that's sitting out there. Eighty thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket. I mean, we have two-point-eight million dollars in free cash. It's important that we get on the forefront of getting that downtown going. So for eighty thousand dollars on a contracted position, I like the idea that it's contracted because that is, it's not a town employee, it's no health benefits, it's a set amount. Get it going, so we can start developing that plan. By the time we decide what we're doing with ARPA, we're going to, you, you're talking, the ARPA money is over a period of time and all that, and then you just lose momentum. And I think that downtown, there's opportunities there. You know, I saw that one of the pieces of property that was recently sold, that used to be the old Goodwin's building, you know, got sold to one, and it just transferred to another person this past week. What are their thoughts on building that storefront downtown? One knows we have enough churches down there, we need something else for the downtown, especially with, you know, you have wells, it's going to have residential. We know the K Street project is another residential, but it's, now is the time for us to get momentum going. What are we doing with that downtown? So, okay, send it up to Council, let's talk about a funding mechanism. If it's not ARPA, there's other, we have stabilization money that we have a pool, and I'm not a tax and spend, no spend, but those are one-time monies that we can target, and this is a target specific. And I agree, you know? I, I don't want that department losing the momentum that they got with getting grants and all that, so hire somebody to contract for this period of time, and then as we morph through our year or two, that if, if it does go, that, hey, now we're in a routine, evaluate how we're going to staff that business, that downstairs. But my recommendation would be to, to send it up, however you want, but we can talk about the funding mechanism at Council, but I, I think we should move forward with, at least exploring, just getting RFQ out there, request a poll, and see if there are people out there, what their proposal's going to be, and what they would provide for service. So, I don't want to, let's not, because we always kick can down the road. Now's the time to, to go forward. Thank you, Joe.
Joe, you have anything?
Um, I basically, I tend to agree with Jack, and I think that the idea of putting it on, putting it on ARPA would, it would basically take, push it into at least the next fiscal year because of the way our ARPA cycle is set up. Whereas we're going to be doing the budget right, basically, now, very, very soon. So I'm assuming your goal is to get into the next budget cycle. So you, you'd want to have this person up and running by like July, I assume, right?
Go ahead, Ms. Dean.
Thank you. I, I don't, I hadn't envisioned it lining up with a fiscal year necessarily. I was thinking now, act now, and if it carries over for twelve months from the date of hire, and so, you know, if you were to do it for lining up for the fiscal year twenty-three, however you want to approach it, I do want to also respond to what I heard from you in the ad hoc meeting was the concern that, you know, it becomes a future obligation.
Right.
But I just want to make it very clear that I would go into this, I want someone who runs as fast as they can for us and exerts as much energy as, I don't want somebody worrying about solidifying their stay. I don't want someone who's trying to, you know, make, make their home the economic development office. I want someone who wants to maybe argue that if they did a great job, they can become a permanent redevelopment authority executive director that could potentially be hired through other funds if they were able to find it, but I don't want them spending their whole time grant funding or grant writing for their position.
Well, I totally get that, I totally agree with that.
Right. And I don't, and I don't want, and I don't want to go into it with them having the, any preconceived notions that there's a potential for a future position.
That makes sense.
Counselor Marketti first.
The other thing that I, I wasn't sure if we were going to go further with this, but since we are, we have had a lot of people come in and tell us what needs to be done downtown.
Sure.
So I don't think it's a big mystery. We know what needs to be done. We know that we need to fix up the downtown, and we're fixing it downtown. We know we need to fix up the storefronts. We know we need to get people in those storefronts, which I feel if we can get some rental assistance, we could fill those downtown storefronts. And then the last thing, we know we have to do, and I hate to say this, but we know we have to clean it up downtown, because when I go down, every time I go down there, I get accosted by somebody looking for money. So it's like, okay, we need to clean up this downtown, and that's, it's a, I, I'm sorry that I have to say it that way, but that's the way it is. We have to clean it up. So we know what needs to be done. What I would like to see is more action on this, rather than just hiring more consultants. I don't think it's a bad idea, but I would like, we know what needs to be done, so I would like to see more action.
Can I just make a comment, just from a resident's standpoint? Counselor Marketti's right. I was on the phone with somebody who was walking downtown yesterday, and all you hear is, you got money right by Cumberland Farms, right, literally, because some, they were doing something at Cumberland Farms that probably needed change outside. And, and that's a bad, you don't want people, because that scares away people from even coming to the downtown area.
You've got employees down there that get scared.
Yeah, so, I, I agree, I, I agree with that, that point, but I also, I, I take a look at it going, we all know what needs to happen downtown, but we don't know how to, obviously, we've been talking about it, but nobody probably has the expertise to do the downtown. She does, but I don't, but she made it very clear, burning herself out after, I mean, the pie chart, and, and to be able to just do it, not to add to it, and I would be the first one to say, don't hire them on permanently unless all of a suddenly this individual is so successful, then you go, okay, then, then, then extend that out. Let's see how we can do that as a town. Counselor, Jovan and Counselor Dow?
Um, a couple of things. First off, I don't think we have to line it up with the fiscal, because if we appropriate money, it's just a special appropriation.
Sure.
Okay? To my good friend, previous speaker, I'm hearing him say, perhaps we'd hire another person to write grants for that department, and I'm hearing from the C D B G that if this person does a great job, we may be able to maybe look at hiring somebody. So I think this is, this is a win-win, it's a contracted position, so we're not hiring somebody, and then if they're actually doing a good job and they want to morph into that position, it's, it's a segue, and you're not stuck with an individual. So I think it's a win-win, and that, that's all.
I, I, just a caveat, because I will say, if the individual does come in and does a bang-up job, they paid for themselves.
Yeah.
So I, I would say that as well, and I agree. Ms. Dean, and then Counselor Dow, because I know you've been raising your hand, sorry.
I don't know if you've all seen the, the final report. I thought I forwarded it along to everyone. If I haven't, I'll forward it before the next Town Council meeting, and that's that local rapid recovery planning grant, which exactly to Counselor Marketti's point told us what we need to do. I'm, I'm in the middle of trying to coordinate meetings with manufacturers and Q C C and M O B D and Quabog Valley C E C. I'm in the middle of trying to get as many of our minority business leaders together to try to figure out how to reach out to that community and build a relationship. I'm trying many strategies, but it's very time-consuming, and I don't want to risk the job that I was already doing and the extra grants that I'm getting. My fear, if we were to hire someone to just write grants, is that the reason I feel like I'm successful with, with the grants is because I am already dialed into what the priorities are, so I'm reaching for things that I think you, you're, you're hoping for, and we have to sort of, we have to guide that person to, you know, what, what are they out searching for? Well, I have to groom them on, on that role.
Right.
And then if we were to think about the people that we're hiring for those grants, the technical assistants for those grants right now, our engineers and feasibility, the real, the technical parts of that grant, which we, we may still require.
Yeah.
Even with a grant writer, they can't necessarily do the civil engineering piece that the D P W doesn't have the capacity for. So I'm not saying that, you know, I, I fear that I'm misleading when I say this will be the be-all and-all of spending towards economic development. There'll still be the need for, for potentially grant-writing consultants even while I'm writing it, but if you were to hire somebody else, they would need it too.
Right, absolutely.
And with the specific credentials for this real estate position, these are people who've got, hopefully, you know, people who've got the, the experience in economic development. I came from a town administrator position, and so I was eager to learn about economic development, here I am, having a great time, but I think you deserve someone who's got the professionalism to be able to have the conversations with the property owners and be able to look from a macro level what our economy can support, be able to know where to reach in the country to potentially advertise us as a, as a relocation for businesses. That's pretty sophisticated stuff.
Yeah.
And I would, I appreciate your confidence in me. And I, and I'm sure that I would, I would try to prove myself the best I could with a little more time.
Very well. Counselor Dow?
Thank you, it was a chair for you. We can't, I know it's saying temporary position, but you can't like, say, okay, we're going to hire you for three months, example, to see what you can do or what you can prove, and then if we, if he just wasting our time, we can still hire somebody else with the same money? We can do that, or you have to hire them for the whole contract?
We, so I would approach it with milestones and achievements, absolutely. So those means of measure that I put in there, and then you, you know, you're looking at people every three months, that's a great strategy.
Absolutely.
You don't want to get caught up in someone who just grabs some money, right? Right?
Right. So benchmarks?
Absolutely.
Low-level positions?
No, it would be, I mean, you're contracted, but it's not a guaranteed one-year position. You're, you're, you know, at three months, you know, what have you achieved of these milestones? And then at six months and nine months, and by no means are, are we obligated to keep them if they're not meeting those.
But my only concern with that is, let's say you do the three months, like Joe, doing that, who are you going to get? You know, I mean, are you going to be able to get somebody that's going to say, you know, I'm only going to do this for three months, and if they don't like me, even though I'm doing a bang-up job, I think, myself, I'm gone after three months. You'd rather spend the twelve months to, to make sure it happens, correct?
Yes, but if you're contracted position like these, these are, these are people who do things like this. They get hired on for a long-term project, a year. If you look at, for instance, Rob Mahigian's resume, he and another gentleman were hired on for, you know, like a three-year evaluation and suggestions for a, a town, you know? These physicians are used to coming in and, and making things happen like this in these contracted positions. And so we have lots of consulting firms that do this, they could potentially hire out one of their employees to fill the position for the year, and then, and if it doesn't work for them, if it's not affordable for them, they wouldn't be applying for the position.
Okay. Counselor Marketti? Oh, you're good. Anybody else? Counselor Steve?
Yeah, just one quick thing. First off, you mentioned the local rapid recovery thing, the last, I just called up in the email, the last one we have is February of two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, so I will send you the full report.
Um, and the other thing I wanted to ask is, since, and this was sparked actually by somebody that Counselor Marketti mentioned, have you seen the, the, the project report that we did when we had a couple of people come in from Greenfield and kind of, and that analyzed our entire downtown?
Uh, the, the human study? That was for the West Gateway?
No, I, no, it wasn't. This was, this was somebody, a couple, a contractor came from specifically, they, they had done a bunch of work and in Greenfield to revamp their downtown, and they kind of brought some of those ideas to us. Um, and I, I am drawing a blank on their name.
Was that the master plan, the, the lady from the master plan?
No, that wasn't her. Um, that was Stephanie. I can't, it was a couple of guys, an older guy and his partner, and they, they came[1715.13] I can't, it was a couple of guys, an older guy, and his partner, and they, they came in and did a bunch of work, and they had, they had revamped a lot of the buildings in downtown Greenfield, and I am totally drawing a blank on their names. I want to say begin with the city, but that is not. So that paperwork should be down in your office somewhere. Do you remember what year it was? It would have been, I was on the council at the time, so it was probably twenty-fifteen-ish?
Yeah.
It was a while ago, and I don't recall if anything's ever been done with it.
The economic development plan, there's a, there's a, there is an economic development plan that Rosemary had funded in two thousand sixteen, that we've been going through, we've had two meetings so far with planning board, the economic development commission, the, you know, staff too, and we've been talking about that exact point. Have any of these been achieved? And if not, let's make some action plans.
I don't think it was the economic development plan specifically.
Okay.
They were, I can't, it's been such a long time since I've even looked at it, that, you know, just the fact that you mentioned it made me think of it, so, I would have to go digging to see if I can find, I may have a copy of it at home somewhere.
Okay, I'm making notes to myself to look it up.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, DeeDee?
How many grant writers do we have now, working with you?
So, it was in Rosemary's job description, however, I don't know of any other grants that she saw except for the Masworks, which fell through with the AO, the Park Grant, which fell through, and the Green Communities, is that correct?
I thought the Green Communities was granted, I thought it was granted, wasn't it?
It was granting, absolutely, yeah, so that one went through. And she got the electric vehicle through the state. But otherwise, I don't think it was a big focus of her job. Otherwise, each department is doing its own grant writing. So the fire department, the police department, the senior center, everybody's been hustling for their own funds, and to this day still, a lot of that is happening by each department. And then I'm just, as opportunities come up that I don't think they're going for, I'm just sending out, you know, letters of, or emails to everyone asking, is this something we're interested in?
Thank you, DeeDee. Anything else? So, you know, we have a motion on the table to go through ARPA funds, and we just had our first ARPA meeting, and you advocated for that as well. Do you think, I know, I know what Counselor McKenna said is to hold off on the ARPA funds, but supported it, supported, possibly supporting the position. Counselor Joe Van had mentioned maybe free cash with a two-point-eight million dollar free cash, and taking eighty thousand dollars out of that. Or should we just leave it alone as is? I'm thinking, should we amend this motion?
Per, I...
Oh, yeah, yeah. Please, sir.
I would recommend just saying, sending it up as is with the ARPA funds, and we can have a discussion on the floor with the town manager, when the town manager's there, and we can, you can have offline conversations with them, kind of the possibilities of all the pieces of funding. We do, you know, if, if this subcommittee believes that it is an important position and wants to support it, yes, we do have the ARPA funds, which is whatever's left, I don't know what they call them.
Three-nine.
Three-nine, so, okay, eighty thousand is, is a small number in that for possibility of long-range, all the finances, and then looking at the board, which there's a lot of good things here, but there's other ways to fund some of that stuff that might be out of ARPA.
That's the intent, yeah, that's the whole intent of the meeting.
Do you know what I mean? So, yeah, I think you can morph everything into a general consensus. So the question is, if you believe that it's a, the council believes that it's a valuable